The Committee on Health now calls this informational meeting to order. It's 5:32 PM. I'd like to recognize the Vice Speaker, B.J. Cruz. Thank you, Vice Speaker, for joining me. The Committee on Health has called this informational meeting in our efforts to ensure that as we move forward with our fiscal year 2016 procurement of Gov Guam health insurance coverage for our employees, retirees, and dependents, we want to ensure that we get as much feedback as possible from the members. And so I'm happy that today we do have a few of our retirees here to join us. This informational meeting is the first. We will be having a subsequent outreach in the villages to be able to get as much participation as we move forward with the procurement of the health insurance plan. And so I'd like today to welcome the members of the negotiating team, who is chaired by Director of Administration, Senator Tony Blas. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And also maybe later you can also introduce, or you can introduce yourselves as members of the health insurance negotiating team. The Chairman of the Committee on Health and also the Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, which is Vice Speaker Cruz, also sit as members, as ex-official members of this negotiating team. And so we're here to ensure that the general public are represented in the process, right? And so Senator S. Nicholas, thank you also for joining us this evening. So before I turn it over to you to introduce the team, I'd like to recognize, give a special recognition to Vice Speaker Ted Nelson. Thank you very much, sir, for being here. Okay, so Mr. Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce the members of the Insurance Negotiating Committee. I'm the Acting Director of Department, I'm the Acting Director of Department of Administration and currently I'm the Chairperson of the Negotiation Committee. I'd like to introduce, maybe you can just call them individually, Shannon Tatchell is our Legal Counsel from the Aegis Office, Leo Kandasso, who works for us at the Human Research Division for the Insurance Issues, and Adrian Pegurino, he's also a member of our staff at DOE. Of course, Mr. Mike Carlson, who is a retiree rep for the Insurance Negotiating Meeting, Ben Sabino, the District Director, and he's a member of, another voting member, Mike Carlson myself, as well. Carlos Pangne, he's the rep for the Committee of Appropriations, and we thank you for including the Committee of Appropriations in this committee, as well as Ron Tehan for the Committee of Health and Insurance Issues. And of course, Ben Sariola is the rep for the Legislature as well. And that's, and Mr. Carlson, Director of Beaverman, actually Director, I mean Deputy Director of Beaverman, who is the rep, I'm sorry. Oh, and Siva Titanow, who's the rep for DOE, one of the biggest, can you come with us? At this time, we have a handout, a handout for you to look at, Mr. Chair and Vice Speaker and Senator Mike. And I'll just go through it. This is the plan that was asked by the Chairperson, Senator Dennis. On page one, this is the overview of the Negotiating Committee, Title IV, Article III, Section 4302B. And of course, there are 11 members of the Insurance Negotiating Committee. Of course, number one, the Chairperson, DOE Director, that represents the executive branch employees of Gov Guam. And number two, Department of Integrated Services for Individuals and Disabilities, or District Director, Mr. Ben Sabino, represents the interest of employees with disabilities and the executive branch as well. The Real Budget and Management Research represents the executive branch for financial impact, Mr. Lester Carlson. Number four, the DOE, Representative of DOE, more than 3,700 DOE employees, Siva Titanow Cabo. The Legislature represents the legislature branch employees, Mr. Ben Sariola. Judiciary represents the Judiciary Branch, and this is Mr. Chris Dasi. Retirement Fund represents the retired Gov Guam employees, Paula Boss, she was supposed to be here, she might be on her way. And the Retiree Representative appointed by the Government Retirement Board of Trustees, Mr. Mike Carlson. And the member of the general public represents the general public and the executive branch for appointment by the government, Mr. Steve Guerrero. And of course, the Chairperson Committee of Health is Ron Tehan, and of course, Chairperson Committee on Appropriations delegated by Vice Speaker Carlos Pangne. And also the Office of the Attorney General is Lee Casu, represented at all of our meetings. I know, the asterisk for those who are non-delegation members. On the next slide, the Rules of Procedure, again, Public Law 32-083. The Fiscal 2015 Committee, the Committee has developed the Rules of Procedures as required by compliance, in compliance of Title IV, Section 4302. The rules were signed into law on November 27, 2013, but the Committee used these rules during the interim to regulate the proceedings. And again, this is intended to provide the orderly and equitable process by which the team should acquire the acquisition of health care. And there are highlights in this Rules of Procedure. Number one, we require a quorum of seven voting members, seven of 11. There are nine voting members, so I guess the Committee decided to make certain that we have a quorum of seven. And sometimes it's been challenging for us to get seven people to be there, but nonetheless, we continue to insist that the seven is the number that the team has wanted to continue to have. At least of the seven, five members are needed to affirm a vote. And again, they have to sign all the motions, the entire team has to be inclusive of the non-voting members, they're in constant, in communication. And the confidentiality of the, no conflict of interest afforded must be signed by all the members. So all of us have, this is an issue that all the members, and the law requires, I mean requires that, and of course, and the Rules and WRECs requires that as well.
Senator, as we go forward on the overview, if you can just tell us, as you go point by point here, where are we at? Like for the first one, the hiring of actuary, and then where you anticipate, when you anticipate these things to happen?
Okay, we'll do in just a couple. Thank you, Senator. So the RFP process, again, this is the overview. What we did, we recently, the Hague Consulting, is our actuary, was contracted in 2011. And of course, they're not very knowledgeable of the government process and the pertinent laws. And of course, this is, was it last, well, actually, last week, we, the team decided to approve the fourth renewal phase with Hague. And so that just happened recently. Now, the consultant has no decision-making authority at all. All they do is, the team is only, all the team is the only one who makes all the decisions. They would just get guidance from the Hague Actuary. And the Plan Design Development, that's going on as, right now. In fact, tomorrow is the first of the, I guess, numerous meetings with the Insurance Negotiating Committee. The compilation of the team members, of course, they're going to give us the feedback to all the members of the Insurance Negotiating Team as well, and other concerns from the constituents and the retirees, of course, we have, I'm sure the retirees have a major voice in this, for retirees, as well as all the other constituents with all the different departments and the Legislature, the Court, and other people are part of the team. And also, what we're doing right now, this is the Plan Design Development that's going on. The RFP will be issued, that's going to, it won't happen until maybe, we're looking at maybe June or May or April, okay. Well, because it depends on how much of fast interaction between the members of the team. And so the, we want, of course, the idea would be April, but I don't think it'd be as, I think maybe, I think May or June is probably safer for us. And when the RFP is issued, we're going to advertise on all local and international publications, you know, the business, yeah, the business that's going on, and we use that, send out electronically to all the subscribers. And of course, the primary checklist was located in the RFP, and of course, we have a sample for them, for the community to look at. And in the sample, this is required by the Legislature that was authored by you, Mr. Chairman, and approval of the Rules and WRECs. And of course, the rating of the proposal to, on the RFP, there's also a sample that we have here for you guys to look at, it's probably in the, it's right there. And of course, those weights are assigned to each factor as decided by each team member. And members need to conduct an independent rating, and the scores are tallied by the consultant, the Hague Group, and presented to the team for review and evaluation. And in the law itself, it speaks to all of that. The Rules and WRECs were done by the group, and of course, the law was approved and authored by you, Mr. Chairman. And of course, Exhibit A is the RFP sample we have here, the initial review, where all the concerns were about the, or the proposal received within the timeframe, did the offer register initiative party by completing the dignification proceeds, and so on and so forth. It's kind of a, very exhaustive and comprehensive review on the evaluation. And Exhibit B, again, I guess, the group health insurance evaluation for Phase Two. So this is the, this is the, this is the process that we've done. And the rating of all proposals are done, a selection of the highest rated proposals. There are three exclusive and three non-exclusive. So I guess the law requires two different options for the governor to, for his review. Again, all the interaction has to be done by all the 11 members. The nine people are the ones who vote and send, but all 11 are included, absolutely included in all the interaction for this RFP. And the second slide here, Mr. Chair, the process, negotiations. Again, the ratings are, as I said earlier, are done by all the nine voting members, but nonetheless, the two non-voting members are there and are fully aware, and in fact, they can make motions and make recommendations to the team. So the re-rating of the exclusive proposals, the selection of the highest rated for presentation to the governor. And again, we asked the Hague to draft a briefing thing, but every single one of the members of the team were included and make any changes and recommendations to, for the governor to review. And we make the presentation to the governor, the highest rating exclusive carrier, and the three highest rated non-exclusive carriers were also given to the governor for his review. And of course, ultimately, the entire team was, on the day when we meet with the governor to make the presentation, we ask, we invite all of them, all the members of the team to be there. And then, of course, we made the presentation to the governor, and it's up to the governor to make the final selection when it's all done.
Before you go down to the overview, because you're there, and maybe Leo, right? How many years now have we've done this, where we have the option of exclusive and non-exclusive? Just over two years? Has it just been?
I think last year, actually, is when the first time that we implemented, the law was implemented, so we had to issue out the RFP to solicit for both, exclusive and non. So the plans for them to be in compliance, they had to submit both. If they had submitted one or the other, then they were non-compliant. I believe last year was the first time we actually--
Was it just last year?
Yes.
So we wouldn't know yet what the experience would be versus, or the savings, right? Because I remember at least one year, or maybe that's the last year, where if we had gone with an exclusive, the savings, the savings that was, that was on the table, at least, there was different perspectives, is that it was a huge savings. So when would we know what, you know, what the experience would have been for that year?
I know that at least, you know, that's where the actuaries come in, but I know that at least the actuaries have to have 18 months of credible data in order to make that projection, but--
But we don't have that yet then, right?
Not, not on the way we're operating now.
Okay. So when do you think we would have that, to be able to, because you know there is legislation currently that would change the way business works? Because you know, we're looking at perhaps just doing a non-exclusive, where then you, the members would always have the option to choose from three, at least, at the most three.
And, I mean, I can speak on that, but again, it would be the expertise of the Hague and the team can interject, but I would say that probably by after the next fiscal year. Because again, Senator, from what I understand, at least from our consultants, that we need at least 18 months of data to get a true projection of what, you know, our savings would be like. So I'm thinking by the next fiscal year, after that, those datas are combined, then we would have a true picture--
Picture, okay. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Senator, and also, the basic plan designs were done in the current, I guess, insurance plan to be approved by the Insurance Negotiating Team. We had, there's, all the items here, preventive services, immunizations, prenatal care, well childcare, well-woman care, annual eye exams, outpatient care, chemotherapy, chiropractic, and numerous items that were included in the insurance plan that we did with the entire team. And, sure, Vice Speaker.
You mentioned you needed 18 months. If memory serves me right, both years when you submitted the recommendation to the governor, the cover letter or release of recommendation to the governor included a provision that had the governor selected an exclusive carrier as opposed to a non-exclusive carrier, that there would be a savings. Didn't both years have that in the letter? If memory serves me right?
In the briefing letter that we did, it speaks to two different options before. There's two options, exclusive or non-exclusive, and in the exclusive, they outlined, you know, the benefits of exclusive, and also, they also gave information to, by the team to, to the governor for the non-exclusive with the three options as well.
But in both of those letters, without the 18 months, I thought both letters included something that said, if you chose the exclusive, you would be able to save 18 or 10 million. It was, so how did we arrive at those numbers without the 18 months? In those, I mean, those projections?
Projected, yeah. I mean, those are projected, but again, until we get true things. But I guess that's the inception, that we go exclusive, that you have the current subscribers going into exclusive, because every year we don't know what the enrollment will look like. But that's the assumption that, you know, that the current members will continue on with the health, and at least that's my understanding.
And who makes that calculation?
The consultant.
Yeah, the actuary. Okay, and this next slide here, the 2015 Plan Design Improvements, and one of the things that the Insurance Negotiating Team decided to include was the organ transplant, the addition of coverage for the urgent care centers and a copayment of $10 per visit. I can tell you very clearly that the retirees were very engaged. Mike Carlson, the retiree rep, was insisting on including those items. The age-appropriate annual fiscals in the Philippines with no dollar limit. Preventive labor, lab service paid at 100%. The nebulizer machine and if necessary, other durable medical equipment. Resident requirement of 182 days continuous as allowed by the IRS. I noted that all carriers offer the same plan design. So this is the most recent things that we did with the team, and we're happy that this plan was, we try to help the retirees, that's one of the major items we want to do as well.
And also, if I can ask, I know one of the improvements for this year, I believe it's this year, was the, for retirees who have Medicare as their primary, and then the Gov Guam as their secondary, right? For, if you're in a foreign country, let's say the Philippines, for example, they don't accept Medicare, but the practice was that even, so they don't accept Medicare, even if you had secondary, which is your Gov Guam plan, they still wouldn't cover that treatment there. But I know for the 15, for this year, that is, that has changed, right? It's included?
Yeah.
Right? That's correct, okay. So I think that's some of the things that, as we move along, we wanted to ensure that our retirees, because not everyone has that, you know, has Medicare, right? It's just those who are qualified, who have enough, put in enough quarters to qualify for Medicare, has Medicare. But that's something that I think, something that needs to be promoted as well to our retirees, that if they're there in a foreign country, which, you know, more than likely it's the Philippines, four hours away, that they're able to get treated there using their secondary now, which is before you, they would have to come back to Guam or go to Hawaii or to the US mainland to do that, right?
I'm a little confused now. On the Medicare, is there a requirement for X number of quarters? I understood that if you're 65, you can, on your 65th birthday, sign up for Medicare, and you should on your 63th birthday, because otherwise it gets more expensive as you wait later. So I thought all the retirees could avail themselves of the Medicare coverage if they wanted to, and if memory serves me right, we even reimburse them, I think?
Yeah, medication or--
Yeah, but whatever, it is still there. It's available.
And anyone can jump in, please.
Yes. Yeah, Vice Speaker, the point you're making is, you normally need to have 40 quarters in order to have the lower rates for Medicare, if not free, that reduce. We have a number of retirees who didn't get that when they were pre-86, so they're at the higher range, but we did work that out for this current budget year, where if you were in that situation, we would pay your higher rate of, I believe it's around $400 a month, and you would get Medicare coverage, because you'd have, what you'd have to buy. So we do have an arrangement this budget year with the Retirement Fund getting an appropriation to reimburse any retiree who's in that situation and has to pay for Medicare versus it being something that you've earned over your working career. So once you have that card for Medicare, then you're eligible for whatever services are available. That's the current set of these.
Yeah, and you know, maybe now I can open it to our retirees?
Yeah, I have a question, because I retired back in 1990, since I started working back in 1967, immediately after I came from college. There was nothing that I contributed for the, under the Social Security for Medicare, so I am completely out of that. I'm 73 years old. So how do I qualify for Medicare? I have to pay $400 upfront?
Yes, basically, that's the current amount now for a monthly premium. And once you have that for this budget year and hopefully for--
What's the total for the year?
400 times 12.
400 times 12?
About 4,800.
That's 1,000--
About 4,800.
Guys.
It may actually be worse. But once you make the payment, you take your receipt to retirement, you'll get a turnaround, you'll get the money back in your pocket. That's the setup right now. So you, you may be out the money for whatever it takes for them to process your reimbursement.
Because the retirees don't know this, Senator, I'm sorry. I just heard that today, but somehow I heard it that if you want Medicare, and I don't know which is part A or part B, so what are we talking about? Part B or part A?
Talking about both.
Both? So that covers--
And part D also.
So that's 1,000--
4,000.
4,000.
For those who have zero, like--
Will have to go to the bank, probably, and borrow if--
But it, as I was saying earlier, you have to have signed up on your 65th birthday or close to, during your 65th year. If, no, it has been available for a long time. And if you don't, if you didn't sign up on your 65th birthday, for every year after your 65th birthday, there's an additional penalty, which makes it more expensive than the 400.
I think my point, Senator Rodriguez, the Honorable Chair, I think, you know, if this had been taken out to the community, where most of the retirees probably will understand, it's probably the sheep has already left and I'm trying to right. I'm 73 years old, I'm trying to find out, because I've never been sick from day one with the government. I've never been sick. But my wife pays, she resigned, she didn't retire, but I'm carrying her, so probably for both, both, that's $400?
No.
No, just one? So with the dependence, you qualify?
No, Medicare's, my, single. You can only get Medicare as a single person. So your wife, if she's eligible, can get it as a single person. You can't, there's no such thing as family rate.
That's what I'm saying, she has to pay another $400?
Yes.
She's already past 65, Senator. Yeah.
Okay, so, Mr. Blas, you can, you can just conclude his presentation and--
Actually, I have one thing to mention. How does the reimbursement work for the retirees that avail themselves to the $400 and they actually have a claim? Do they have to have a claim to get the reimbursement?
Once you make a payment-- Once you make a payment to Medicare, you'll get a receipt. Take your receipt to retirement, they have a process in place already now for reimbursement. You turn that paperwork, you maybe fill out a form and sign up, a few, whatever information, like PO box number, whatever, and then they'll process reimbursement of that claim.
The percentage of reimbursement is--
100%.
So, so again, for the benefit of myself, it appears that the team has negotiated in the retiree's best interest, in which you will be able to avail yourself to medical Medicaid, by Medicare, by providing the upfront payment, going through the process, getting the reimbursement. So it's not that big of a financial burden at the end of the day.
No, yeah. I don't think--
The alternative, if you're sick, is you wait for consequences and you're going to avail yourself--
You got no alternative when you're sick.
That's the point.
I think that's a catch-22 situation, the, too bad if you die tomorrow and you pay the 8,000 for two, and you get reimbursed later. So, you know, the reality is, many of the retirees are faced with a situation, whether you opt in to just go with your regular insurance, or you're trying to get the best deal for Medicare and your carrier. So, you know, it's something that the retirees or individual retirees will have to decide for themselves.
Any, do we have any data on how many retirees this, this impacts? And for those that, that don't have Medicare, who are 65 and over?
We got a survey last year, and of all those who are 65 and above, and we had a return rate of maybe 20, low 20%, but for those who did return, there were a number of them who, who had other insurance, a lot of them were through the military, through whatever tribe, whatever the preceding things were, some through the spouse, who had a separate insurance of Gov Guam. So the numbers are just a percentage of the total, but of the 20% or roughly so who responded, you probably had maybe one-third who had nothing at all, because they, like, see, they didn't have any quarters in, so they, they thought they didn't want to, they didn't want to qualify. So, so this arrangement is new for this year. So the reason we put it in was because we realized that retirees only have so much income, and we wanted to make it a reimbursement basis. It is hard to take $400 out of your pocket a month, but, you know, at least by getting the reimbursement in place, you wouldn't have that out of your pocket for long. And the Retirement Fund turnaround time and reimbursement is pretty fast.
Okay, so maybe that's something-- Okay, so maybe that's something the team can look at, is, I thank you for, for including it this year, the reimbursement process, but look at something where, because as Mr. Frank was, was saying, it's hard for someone to even come up with a four hundred to see, you know, what, what, what options are available to us to change it from reimbursement to maybe an advance? I don't know, you know, but that's something that we can think about. Okay, yes.
I want to share, I guess the last slide just talks about the conclusion, the negotiation team has commenced the meetings, and in fact, the comprehensive meeting is going to happen beginning tomorrow at nine thirty, and I'm sure we agree that all the members, we encourage them to be all, be all there, you know, and, and of course, we, we have a timeline, we have timelines, and, and, Mr. Chair, we will provide timelines to, to yourself and to the Chairman of Committee of Education and Finance in Texas as well.
Would, would it be possible to do cost-benefit analysis to determine whether or not it'd be more, more cost-effective to have those of us sixty-five and older on Medicare as opposed to being on a local carrier? Because, I mean, it would seem to me that the four hundred or the eight hundred is still less than the twenties, or the twelve or eighteen hundred that we're paying for retirees with...
Analysis of this past negotiating period, and one of the things that was on the table in addition to the reimbursement for Medicare A, B, and D was providing Medigap coverage. And we, because Medicare is a single buyer only, single payer, the same thing applies to the Medigap. You have to buy it as an individual, you can buy it as a family or whatever. So we targeted the retirees who were Class One, which meant you were single, and were sixty-five and over, and we looked at the numbers, we looked at what plans they were in, we looked at what it would cost, and the savings are gigantic. The coverage is the only thing you need to massage, because you may have a, a plan, one of the three plans we have now that has all the bells and whistles, under a Medigap, you're trying to fill in, like the word is, the gaps where you don't have coverage for certain things under Medicare. But the trick was, it wouldn't, it wouldn't do anybody good to have Medigap plan if they weren't in Medicare first. And some people have indicated, some didn't earn a quarter, so they never signed up, and, and you're right, that every year, you have a seven-month window around your sixty-fifth birthday. If you don't sign up within a seven-month period, every year is a penalty on top of it, and it's, it's for life. That's, that's Medicare rules. It's a percentage of what you would owe, so, but, the four hundred is the max normally, but four hundred plus penalty, so it's a percentage on top of, so maybe, I don't know, ten, fifteen percent, could be more.
If memory serves me right, you guys didn't complete the Medigap negotiation, right?
No, no, actually, actually, we did, we had quotes, we had, we didn't put it in the plan itself, because there, there's a gap. We have retirees who under the two thousand plan could, if I got it right, could migrate immediately into, to that plan. Those in the fifteen-hundred plan had to wait till January, so there's a gap of one quarter. So again, we were trying to figure out the major expense most retirees have, it would be the drugs, sorry. So we were working with the Chair and your predecessor to see whether or not we could cover that with appropriation, and because we didn't accept it at the team level, appropriation never followed. But that was one of the avenues we're looking at, so that we had covered the cost for that quarter for those who had not already signed up, even though they were beyond sixty-five.
Since it is early enough in the process, will, will you be attempting to try to put that back in for this year?
This, this part of the, the items that were in our insurance negotiation meetings, this, this is one of the options.
Yeah, but we also have to consider the gaps in trying to cover...
How to mitigate the gaps.
Yeah.
As we have a, the, the two chairs...
Before we decide to include it in the RFP, and part of it is, I believe we're trying to schedule a presentation by Public Health to discuss what is required for us to maybe include it in the RFP this year again, and, and maybe even at the end, including it in the contract if it all, if all works well. But there are issues that may preclude us from offering it this fiscal year.
The Medigap part for the Medicare, you could...
The Medigap, yes. I mean, there, yeah, there are issues with maybe including it this year.
But I think one of the things that needs to be done is, retirement fund is going to have to do an educational process, because I don't know for individuals who are more involved in what goes on in this island, and for them to say that they didn't realize that they could have gotten this is a little bit shocking, because they're probably the most well-informed people that I know. And if they didn't know, then how many people in the retirement fund are getting reimbursement? I know that there's a number of them, I can't remember what the number was, but it was quite a few, that are getting, because it costs, we're running, I think, two million, a little more than two million in reimbursement.
Appropriation?
Yes. So we've got to figure out how to be able to try to figure this out, because I know we were talking, I, I've been thinking about trying to figure out whether or not it would be better to have all of us old people, the older people, than the, I'm there, you know, I'm within seven months of my sixty-fifth, so, so we have to, we have to try to figure, figure this out. But the thing is, is that we've got to educate everybody about the benefits, and if memory serves me right, I've spoken to a number of retirees who are on Medicare, and they swear by it. I mean, they absolutely swear by it, that they get much better coverage on the Medicare, because if they travel to the States to visit their family and they need medical attention, they don't have to call anybody, they have their card and they just go in. And I think one of them was telling me he had open-heart surgery on, on his card, and, and the amount that he had to pay, his copayment was like nine hundred dollars or something for an open heart. It was, it was really, really, it, it, and he was swearing by it, and he kept trying to push the idea of trying to help all the rest of us get back, get onto the Medicare in the, in the hopes of reducing the cost, but also providing us with ability to be able to travel. Because under this one, with a hundred and eighty-five, eighty-two days on island, we, we can't travel to go see our families in the States for any extended period. So it would seem to me that, especially for some of the retirees who have children that are in the States and they want to go visit them, trying to get them onto the Medicare would probably be a lot better, so they could be covered, because we haven't even talked about all the other retirees that moved to the States that don't get no coverage. We won't talk about it.
Yeah, so, I'm, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm just curious, so, I mean, I'm working this out of my head, right? Let's say you retire before sixty-five, right? And then you get Medicare at sixty-five. Why don't we just cover retirees who retire up until they hit age sixty-five, and then just have every retiree at age sixty-five go on Medicare? Why don't, why isn't the system set up that way?
No, you, you can do it. I, I went to a retirement, health thing in Kentucky, and in the state of Kentucky, every retiree at age sixty-four, on their sixty-fourth birthday, the retirement fund finds them, even if they're living in Florida or wherever, finds them and starts them in the process. So by the day that their sixty-fifth birthday, they're on, and there's absolutely no question about it, because they want to move them on, and it's, it is, but the, the problem is, is trying to convince the retirees that this is a good idea, you know? Unless we can get a few of those that have had really good experiences with Medicare come out and talk about their experiences with it and the benefits, for us, change is, is difficult, you know? I mean, I haven't changed my insurance in eight years, because it, I just don't want to have to fill out a new form.
Would you mandate that they pay this four hundred dollars?
We, we reimburse everybody.
Yeah, I know, but in the meantime, see, you've got to pay whatever it is you owe. You're going to pay four hundred dollars.
Well, here's where the math starts to really confuse me a little bit, because if we were to just cover out every retiree when they retire up until they hit age sixty-five, and then cover them in Medicare out of the government's expense instead of paying for the insurance portion, then they wouldn't, they probably wouldn't need to pay that four hundred dollars a month. And the risk that we're incurring right now of having this reimbursement system set up is, if the retiree puts it off until later, we're going to have to reimburse a much higher amount because of all the penalties, we would have been better off just having them enrolled from day one. So maybe the new system, and something that the retirees need to really go back and, and talk to all their constituents about, our constituents about, is, what, how would they feel about a system that's built where retirees are covered at retirement till age sixty-four and a half or whatever, and then immediately enrolled and covered Medicare at sixty-five and beyond? Because I think it will be a win-win from the government's costs, and then also from the, for the retirees, they don't have to do this reimbursement scheme. So it might be something that we can, we can discuss further.
You know, number one, it would have to be Class One. It has to be single, so you can't cover, you know? And then, the way Medicare works is, you know, everyone has eligibility requirements based on the different plan. You have like hospital, you have Medicare, you also have prescription. In some cases, you, if you don't have enough quarters, then you're going to have to buy in, and it ranges. But if you're asking me, you know, do they do this, like you suggest, they do it everywhere. In fact, they even mandate it. They require people to enroll.
On the singles issue, what if somebody had dependents, but they enrolled as a single under Medicare, and we still cover the dependents under the retirement, I mean, under the retiree health insurance? So you're, you're covered as a group up until age sixty-four and whatever, then you're covered as an individual, and your dependents are continued to be covered under the government? I mean, is that something else that we could work out?
But the subscriber is the retiree or the dependent?
The subscriber will be the, the retiree, but they would have zero coverage. The, this, this, the person, the purpose of subscribing will be to just have them identify their dependents, with zero coverage, because one hundred percent of their coverage is Medicare.
In those cases, in a lot of other places, they still cover them. It's just that those that could be on it completely, it's like first dollar coverage, you know?
Yeah, but see, what I'm trying to do is balance the cost, where if they have zero coverage as a subscriber, but then the, the government's contribution is used to pay for the Medicare, the Medicare portion.
Well, a lot of the retirees I know are, are like myself. My wife carries her own, she's sing, carries single, I carry single. So as far as she said about being eligible for single, I think most of the married retirees are doing that if they don't have dependents. Yeah, the problem I have, the problem I have with this is, it's not fifteen hundred and it's not two thousand, because you meet the fifteen hundred, you still have to come out with another fifteen hundred. They call it out-of-pocket, they snuck that in there. And if you've got a two thousand plan, you've got to come up with six thousand. I know a lot of, because I just came twice, three times last year from the Philippines, and you got a lot of patients that are there, stuck there for months, two months, and we met the deductible, my wife met her deductible, but she still hasn't met that out-of-pocket thing. In, in two weeks, she met that out-of-pocket, I mean, that deductible. But after that, we still had to come up with another fifteen hundred. So it's not a fifteen hundred or two thousand, it's a three thousand and a six thousand. So I wish that when they called, named the plans, they don't call it fifteen hundred and two thousand, call it what it is, three thousand and six thousand.
Yeah, and so, you know, we, you know, we were, so this is another issue, but this is a very good point, because we had brought this up to the negotiating team in a formal request for the team to look into this, and we were told by attorney John Weisenberg, he's retired now, that he was investigating this. So I, I know that, that's something that's still on, on, on your desk and you're looking into it, because...
It's with our Consumer Protection Division, it's been forwarded to them to do the investigation.
It's like false advertising, right? They're saying it's fifteen hundred, and we don't find out until we're on the table. Well, you know, you've got to come up with another fifteen hundred.
Yeah, so at least, if we were early on, this part of the, the phase and the, the process, if we can, if you can assist us in helping moving that forward, because I think that'd be important for the team to, to get a, a real legal guidance on that, because that is a, it is a big concern, that, that we've been seeing, is that really it's not the fifteen, it's three thousand that, you know, that you're, you have to pay for, right? That's right.
And out-of-pocket.
Right. But you don't know about that, anyway.